All right, good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for joining us again today on 1341 for our weekly town hall meeting. Back on schedule today on Wednesday. Got off track a little bit last week with some stuff going on, so did do an update on Friday. I hope you guys caught that. If not, it should be up on the portal and you can catch it there. And we did send out a recap memo which covered most of everything. So I know that we did cover some pertinent information. So if you did not get that memo, let us know. We'll get you a copy. And like I said, it should be up on the portal if you have access to that and you can check that out. So I did want to get back on schedule and go over a couple of things and answer any questions that y'all may have today. We had a lot going on the past week or so with continuing to move things forward just on a regular business standpoint of construction and kitchen renovations and trying to add more amenities to dining and other aspects of quality of life at Springmore while still dealing with this with the virus that continues to just not go away and seems to continue to constantly get worse. So that seems to be the case in the state throughout the country. So we're hoping to get that back under control soon. But I will start off, I hope most of y'all have seen the memo in the mail today. If not, I am, I regret to report, we did have another employee test positive for COVID-19. They work in the health center, part-time CNA. So we just found that out yesterday. So all the information regarding the incident was in a memo. And then it was also distributed to all staff members, all independent living family members, Stuart Health Center family members, and our board of directors. So that was all included. I did realize after meeting, talking with the resident today, and I've thought about this before, but I've just, I've not done it because nobody's asked. And we just had so many ways of communication, I just honestly just didn't do it. But it's a quick fix. A lot of y'all have email addresses here, almost 300, I think to be exact from what Daniel pulled off the portal today. So resident brought to my attention that they found out from a family member about something in the health center that affected them before she personally found out via the memo in the mailbox. So I hate that happened. I know most people are used to kind of get the memos in the mail. But Daniel's created a listserv, just like we did for all of the family members in independent living and in the health center to send out the updates. So once we send out a new update, which will be either later today or probably tomorrow, we will make sure you get that electronically as well. You'll still get the paper copy in your mailbox because not only, not everybody has email address, but you'll be getting it via email as well. So that'd just be another way that we'll, that you'll have this information. In a perfect world, I'd put the certain ones in resident boxes and need a hard copy and only email certain ones. But until we come up with a better system, we're just gonna just duplicate everything and just everybody will get a hard copy in case you need it. So we'll move forward with that. But to get in, to dissect the memo and provide a little more information about the situation, we did have an employee test positive for COVID-19 that worked in the health center. The good news was they were very proactive, just like our last case. And as soon as they felt symptoms, they let us know and we put them out for the 14-day quarantine. That was on June 9th, and they have not been back to work since. So on June 9th, the employees started feeling symptoms, got tested the next day, which is June 10th. And then just yesterday, on June 16th, we got the results back saying the test was positive. A couple of people have asked why it took so long to get the test back. Just the clinic where the employee went, they told them upfront, it'd be two to four days on the short end and five to seven on the long end. So it was more on the long end of six days. I think they were backed up with tests. I think there's been an increase of tests, obviously with the cases going up in the state. So I think the systems and the labs are backed up. So we got it as soon as we could. But they've not worked since June 9th. That is, that is the very good part. The part that's not great is that it's obviously a positive case. And we had to contact trace as much as we could of any of the residents that she, that she had contact with during her last work schedule. So we were able to identify 15 residents that were possibly exposed to this employee, and they will all be tested today. We have Mako Labs coming out to do that. And they're gonna be testing all of the 15 residents. All the residents, family members were notified personally last night via phone call. I think there were one or two we could not get ahold of. But we had a team of admin staff actually call, health center admin staff called the family members to let them know the possible exposure. And we were gonna conduct the test today. And of course, we'd let them know the results. They were very nice and very thankful for us, obviously calling, but more so being proactive in doing, in doing those cases, those tests for those possible residents that were exposed. We, the good thing about the way we schedule is we have something called dedicated assignment. So on a regular basis, and if you have a loved one in the health center, you know this, it's not perfect, but this is how it works, that we try to have the same employees take care of the same residents every time they work. So with that being the case, that we were able to, we were able to narrow down the 15 people that this employee worked the last three times she worked. So it wasn't 50 people or 60 people or all 115 in the health center, it's just 15 that she takes care of on a regular basis. So those were the 15 that we identified through our contact tracing, and those are the 15 that will be tested. We called the local health department as soon as we found out as well to get their guidance. And they, we told them our plan, which was in the memo of that we were going to quarantine those 15 people, and that we were going to do checks on them every shift, which is first shift, second shift, third shift, obviously, do temperature checks, respiratory checks, and then any kind of other checks of symptoms. And we charted them every shift as well. And any kind of symptoms, we'd report that to the health department, to the doctor for further testing. So we got that in place. And also, also he had suggested about us being, trying to do those six, those 15 tests if all possible. So we wanted to do all we could to be proactive. So that's why we called out the lab to do that. And we'll let those specific residents know and their family members know the results as soon as we hear back. Hopefully, it'll be no more than 48 hours. And we should have that back by Friday. So, so we have that. I talked about the quarantine, the checks on each shift, the charting, contacted the families. And again, the same memo that you received, that went to all the staff, independent family members, health center family members, and our board of directors. So everybody got a different, well, you didn't let it email it, but each group got a different description within the body of the email. So I addressed them personally. Obviously, a little more personal to the health center residents than I would maybe staff or board of directors. So I just kind of, you know, I just altered it to, to, to address that audience. But the memo that everybody got is the same. So just be mindful that everybody got the same memo with the same information. So we met with all of our, we met with all of our, the health center staff yesterday. We called first shift before they left, second shift they came in. And Carrie Corley came back last night a little before 11:00 PM to talk to third shift. And we talked to shifts again today to let them know what was going on, let them ask questions, just to be upfront with them and let them know of one of their coworkers. So that went well. And then, and I think we've touched everybody so far. We will, I'll provide an update if there's any information from the health department. We have a nurse that's, that's out here now, probably he says coming out between 1:00 and 2:00. And it's after 2:00. His, I can't pronounce his whole name, but he goes by Nuru. And he was the nurse that came out last time that we had the employee test positive at housekeeping. And he was very helpful and gave us suggestions. And we stayed in touch with him. So he is coming out again today. And if things would happen to progress or get, or have another case, then he would, they would get fully involved. They don't get fully involved and kind of come in and take over and really help until we have two cases. I pray that doesn't happen. But unfortunately, it's not unheard of, and it's not unlikely that that may happen. It's, hopefully it won't. But I don't think I put this in the memo, but I will, but I did address this in certain emails that today's the 103rd day that we've been tracking this virus at Springmore. We started on March 6th. So I think that's 103 days. If I counted up quickly, it was kind of late when I did that last night, but 103 days. And, and I think having two cases, considering 600 residents and 550 employees that come in here every day, especially with the health center where there's about 225 that come in around the clock, 24/7, 365, to go 102 days and not have a case in the health center with 115 residents is pretty remarkable. Honestly, I thought it was virtually impossible to never get a case in there. I'd hope that wouldn't be the case. But, but it happened. And all we can do is just continue to move forward with what we're doing. I feel extremely confident, just like last time, that we, that we caught it early. And we're doing all we can safety measure wise and procedures and policies and working with the health department and getting people tested. I don't think we can do much more. So, so we just pray that the results of the tests come back negative. Any other employees that have to be tested or, or in the future, that they come back negative. But it's just, it's just impossible to say. It's just too much exposure and too many people coming in and out at one time, and they have to be, that it's, that it's, that it may be impossible to, to stop that. But I say that only because I don't, if you get another memo in a week or a month or a year from now, you know, it, I just, I think people realize that after hearing it from the news, that we've went so long, but doing so good, it just shows that we're not an exception either. I mean, it could, it could happen anywhere, even as the nicest place I've ever been at, the state, by far, it can happen. So just be mindful of that. But we will do our best. We strive. Well, you know, like I said, I thought it was virtually impossible for it not to happen, but we strive for perfection and hoped it wouldn't happen. But we still operate like, like that every day, hoping that, and working to be perfect and not have any cases. So we'll let our guard down and stay on top of that as much as possible. Of course, I'll be happy to answer any questions when we're done with this. I was gonna have Margot, our infection control nurse, join me today. But she is with Nuru, the nurse, with his visit and getting some questions answered and doing his visit. And, and he's helping with the staff with anything they need help with. So if it's something medically that's over my head, I will, I'll get with her. But she has just been amazing. I know people talk about the staff and how good they've been. But if you have not met Margot, she's our infection control nurse and staff development coordinator. She took the place of Debbie McCusker, who was our former nurse in that area. She is absolutely amazing. She, she, she came in during this time. So she doesn't know what it's like just for a normal day here. But she's been a nurse for many years and did the same job at Rex Rehath before. So she comes well qualified. And it's just been a absolute godsend for us. So if you want to thank anybody, and you want to think somebody's done a good job, Margot has done as good a job and worked harder. And we've relied on her more than anybody at Springmore, I'll have to say, over the last 103 days. So, so that's the case that everybody got. So we'll get into a few reminders, a couple announcements, and then I'll be happy to take any questions. Joyce wanted me to read a few reminders about the clinic that are just, you know, as things kind of continue to loosen up, which unfortunately, that's turned out not to be very good. And that's why we're trying to keep our guard up here on certain things. Because it does just seem to not be the right thing to do at this, at this time. The health center, as y'all know, is still off limits to anybody. No visitors of any kind except, except for end of life situations. We had, not me personally, but we have a, a group of public policy representatives that work with leading age that had a call with a lady named Cindy DePorter. She is the head of DHSR, Department of Health and Service Regulations for all skilled nurses in North Carolina. So she had gotten wind that people were trying to do creative visits. And she has announced personally that absolutely no visits were allowed within, with any residents face to face in a nursing facility. So you're, I'm telling you honestly upfront, we cannot allow visitations. And we've never been able to. And I say that only because she, she addressed our group within leading age. She got wind of a community, which got creative, it sounds terrible to me, of creating some community, try to create some Plexi, Plexiglas box to put the resident in like this clear cube. And then the family member could come up and talk to them. That sounds awful to me. I'd much rather do a window visit. But she said that was not even acceptable. I had hoped to eventually do courtyard visits for, starting with spouses that live at Springmore Independent in the health center and do that in the courtyard where we bring the resident outside and bring the independent resident outside. They'd have to be six feet apart. They'd have to wear masks, or at least they could see each other without a glass window. But that has been quickly shot down. There was a community in near Winston-Salem that was doing that. They got reprimanded pretty bad for doing that. So the only visitations we can allow are the window visits. So just please spread the word to family members. If you're a spouse that lives in the health center, you're hearing it, it's the gospel truth that we cannot have any visitation. And I have no idea when that's gonna happen. That is beyond my authority. So I just want to let people know upfront that that is, that is just, that's the way it is. And I don't, I don't know when that will change. So just wanted everybody to know how stern and strict that is. So leading into that, it, we talk about certain areas within the health center. And I wanted to remind everybody that family members are not allowed to accompany their parents, i.e. residents, to clinic appointments. This will not change until the health center has reopened. If they want to be on the phone with the resident during the appointment, this is fine. So yeah, so it's fine. So, so you cannot accompany, your family member cannot accompany you to the clinic for a doctor's appointment. That you, that nobody can visit the health center. So you obviously can go to the clinic as a Springmore resident, but no family member can accompany you. Again, if you want to be on the phone with a doctor while they're talking to, to you, and you want your son or daughter or whoever your power of attorney is or caretaker to, to listen, that's perfectly fine. Call Joyce, 705, no, that's not Joyce, 7069. Is that right, Daniel? I feel confidence. Yeah, I think it's, yeah, I think it's 7069. Have to call her a lot. So I do know, 7069. And she can set that up to have the, have the phone available while they're visiting. But remember, no, your kids cannot, your children cannot come to with you to the clinic for visits. If you are resident, which all of y'all are, if residents are off campus, they're, they're on their leave of absence, with their families, they cannot make clinic appointments and be seen while they're away. So if medical attention is needed, you would need to go to an urgent care. So with you being off site and your leave of absence, you can't come back to the clinic into the health center. So just be very mindful of that, to be seen for an appointment. And then clinical specialists, they're not coming back on campus until further notice, probably phase three. I think I mentioned that last Friday, that audiologist, the dentist, and the podiatrist, they have chosen not to come back. And we, we think that's the best practice for them not to come back. They said, I think we all feel comfortable in phase three, we'll let them come back. So that's, that's the latest on all the specialists coming in. Speaking of phase three, I am no policymaker or mind reader. But with everything going on, I, I think it's doubtful we move to phase three. If we do, I think it'll be a much scaled down version, much more scaled down than what phase two was. If anything, I think we may pull back and go back to certain things. I know there was a, an issue talked about, about Wake County and Raleigh required to wear masks in every public places, possible stay-at-home order being put back in place. I can see that very much happening. We're unfortunately, unfortunately surging in cases. And it may be the only way to kind of, to kind of get it back down. So phase three, y'all know as well as I do, and probably more than me, what may happen. But that's just my thoughts. But how it pertains to Springmore is it's not gonna, we're not gonna be able to do anything with the specialists until phase three. So please remember that. Joyce wanted me to talk about that. A couple reminders and some announcements for dining. Please make sure that you have called in your order or submitted your order online through the portal or through the email address by 10:30 the day of for lunch and 3:30 day of for supper. That's the latest that we can accept orders in order to, to get all the information, get it prepped, and get it delivered to you on time. So just be mindful of that. Orders need to be in for lunch by 10:30 day of and for dinner, 3:30 day of. Sundays continue to be a popular time for residents to eat in the dining room, which is great. Sunday's always our big meal. We've always had extended hours for that. But with the limited capacity we can have in the dining room, which is approximately 44 people, just be mindful on Sunday when you come in and eat to not hang around as you normally would to allow the other folks to trickle in. Like I said, we can only have approximately 44 people in there at a time. That's a very popular meal. So, so we've done every other meal, it's fine. There's not a problem. We don't get close to the max. Because I think other people are still using, well, obviously they are, takeout and, and delivery and grab and go. So we have so many different options that the dining room's not being overloaded, which I think is good. But on Sunday, it is. And I, I know we have a good menu on Sunday, and it's a good meal. But just be mindful, if you are eating, just to be courteous and not sit around the table too long and finish your meal and then give the next person a chance to come in and eat so that everybody can get through on the, on the time schedule that we've been allotted. And then lastly, starting next Tuesday, we're gonna be adding some new items to the grill and the bistro. That's been very popular so far. It has some really good, I've had a lot of comments on the, on the grab and go stuff we've had there. So we're gonna have some new things added. And for all the people that love hamburgers and hot dogs, I know Mr. Graham Anderson has mentioned several times, he misses chili dogs. So Mr. Anderson and all the hamburger lovers, I'm not sure who loves hamburgers out there, maybe Miss Curran, I think she does. Hamburgers and hot dogs will be available starting next Tuesday. So hamburgers and hot dogs will be available, also ice cream, bottled water, and deli sandwiches. I'm not sure about soda. I thought soda was down here, but I don't want to say that. If Jennifer didn't put it, it's probably not. Not yet? Oh, yeah, okay. So, well, yeah, dues to storage. We don't, yeah, the storage, storage limitations, we won't have the sodas yet. But hang tight. Hopefully, the hot dogs, hamburgers, ice cream, bottled water, and deli sandwiches will be a nice addition, plus more grab and go items, more variety of that. So, so y'all look out for that. And we'll continue to add stuff as we can. And eventually, we'll get back open full and everything will be grand. And we'll have an awesome new kitchen, which is coming along really nice, by the way. I got to see that today. It is absolutely amazing. Can't wait for y'all to see that. We'll do some tours, there's some before and after stuff. But it looks great. And they're finishing up nicely. The storage units of cooler and freezer is just, I mean, they're massive. I mean, it's, one of them's almost the size, it seems like it's about the size of this auditorium. It's huge and very well needed. It's not that, quite that big. But it's just pretty big. So we'll, we'll work on that. That's all the dining updates. Leah had no changes from Friday for resident life. So anything we talked about on Friday, that still kind of is still in effect. But we do have just some normal kind of announcements for spiritual wellness. Just, just a reminder that the summer school, summer school, the Sunday school class is on a summer hiatus. So, so no Sunday school now. That will be starting back a little bit later, probably in the fall. And then the Zoom discussion group tomorrow, which is Thursday at 10:30. That's gonna continue. If you've been doing that, jump on the Zoom call at 10:30. Vespers will be as normal, 7:00, 7:00 PM on Sunday. And Juliana will be preaching this time. So, so you'll have the pleasure of hearing her. And then Bible study, faith and fear. That's still going on. And it's, we'll start again Tuesday, June 23rd at 3:00 PM. So Bible study, vespers, and Zoom discussion group. Kind of the regular schedule, but want to remind everybody of that. Okay. Lastly, for fitness, fitness classes and pool remain the same. So no changes with that. If, if you want to set up an appointment for the pool, just please contact Carrie Ritchie. I think she's 7147. If you want to join a fitness class, or if you want a, if you want a slot for the pool to do, to do a class. Three contracted fitness instructors are returning to teach classes. And you'll see a few more additions to the fitness schedule in July. So we, we've, we've allowed our long-term contractors that were health and fitness contractors come back. And they're screening like employees to offer more classes for the residents here. We can only do 10 or less still. But the contractors are able to come in. Some want to, some, some do not. But she has three that are coming back. So you'll see some new things added in July, which is only like two weeks away. So hang tight for that. And make sure you call her if you want an appointment for the pool or fitness. And lastly, the North Village and Wellness Center exercise rooms, they are, continue to stay closed for now. We're working out details. I hopefully open North Village by next week. We were not able to come to a consensus before today to get that figured out of how we want to do it and what we want to offer. We thought about, if we open up north and south is not open. But, you know, my thoughts are, if one's open, it's better than nothing. And there's nothing stopping South Village people to come over to the north, just like North Village people go over to south. So, so we are working on that. The Wellness Center, we cannot open back up just due to the, the flow of people in there with the, the fiscal, with the fiscal therapy. Remember, that's the only other place we can conduct fiscal therapy at this point, because they cannot go into the health center for that service. And also the salon, and then also the pool. So that's just too many people in that area. We do have the exercise equipment out in the terrace room to supplement that. We could have only allowed two people in there anyway, based on the square footage. But we will look to do North Village next week. So I know a lot of people are anxious about that. So just hang tight. And we'll have, we'll have some information on that of, if we can open that up next week. Let's see, what else we got? Lastly, I've had a lot of people ask me about the doors and the automatic closures on the doors. We have kept those off for a while. And I have no idea if it's helped keep, keep people out or not. I hope it has. But, but I don't know if it's, if it's worth continuing to have the censors shut off now that the stay-at-home order's been lifted. You know, you're kind of free to go. It's not being frowned upon now. But, you know, I realize that y'all are leaving and it's hard to open and get out. We will probably look to turn those back on toward the end of the week. But if we do turn the censors back on, it still does not allow any outside visitors in the building. I cannot stress enough that we cannot have family members inside the building. This is something that's almost impossible to police unless we do lock all the doors and everybody comes into the main entrance. I've thought about that many times, and I've almost done it. And I've decided not to. Because I am hopeful that you will tell your loved ones and your loved ones will, will be courteous enough or responsible enough not to enter the home of 475 independent residents where they're not screened, where they can, where they could bring the virus in. And anybody can bring it in, I'm well aware of that. But at least we have checks and balances that we're able to provide for our employees and essential contractors where the staff, where the family members are not. The only way I could do that is to lock all the entrances and have them screened at the front desk. But I am very hopeful that, that, that other people will hold each other accountable for that. Staff will, residents will. And if you see a family member that should not be inside the building, I beg you to please call security and, and they will get them to leave. There's just absolutely should not be any visitor. So censors on or censors not, they're not locked. So we'll probably turn those back on just for the people that have a hard time getting out. They're getting out more regularly now, which I'm glad. I know people are wanting to get out. The weather's not being good this week, but it is becoming nicer. And hopefully it'll be nicer moving forward. So we will, we'll look to turn those on. So you'll still see the signs up, but when you walk up, hopefully it will probably open soon and not be closed. But that is about all I have. The main focus was the, what's the case here that I tried to thoroughly go over, tried to cover as much as I could. And again, be transparent with everything. It's nothing to be ashamed of. It's nothing I'm ashamed of. It's just, it's a, it's a lot to deal with when you have an employee that's, that's tested positive. Then you gotta test certain residents. And then if they come back positive, more people, it's just, you know, it's, it's a lot to deal with. But it's, I feel very confident about it. And we're doing all we can. It's nothing that's been a lack of trying or anything that we could have prevented whatsoever. So, so I feel very good about that. But we'll keep everybody updated on that. So if y'all have any questions, feel free to give me a call. And I'll try to answer them the best I can. If not, we will always get you an answer. And I'll make sure that Holly sends out a recap as she always does. So, we have something, right, Daniel?
The 15 residents that are quarantined now, were they, did the employee that came contacted them, see only those 15 residents those three days?
So the question was, the 15 residents that are in quarantine right now and then being tested, are those the only residents that the staff member who tested positive saw over the past three days? To the best of our knowledge, yes. I cannot 100% put my hand on the Bible and say that was the only 15 people they saw. But the very best of our contact tracing through her schedule and shift managers and nurses, those were the 15 that we feel best that she had contact with. So yes, I feel very confident about that. But I can never be 100% sure about that or anything. But yes, those are the ones that we're very hopeful that's the only 15 that she came in contact with. And that's why we're testing them. that's the only 15 that she came in contact with and that's why we're testing them. So the question is what does the tests, what's the required test, um, consist of? I don't know. I've never had a COVID test, so I assume some type of nasal swab. Mako Labs will be out here today to do that. So I believe it's some type of nasal swab and they will send out through their laboratories, um, for results and then we'll get those and then we will let the family members and the residents know what the results are. But, um, I, I, I'm not being facetious. I've, I've just never had it done, but I think it's some type of nasal swab for a COVID test. They're all, I think nasal swabs. Um, so, um, I'll, I'll be happy to share some more details of how it was conducted, um, next week or when I find out. The question was, do we consider, um, testing the staff that was on contact with her during the same shift? Yes, we have and there's a few that are, um, that we have considered, um, working with the health department. He did not feel that that was necessary to test all the staff, um, or all the residents. That may come, but for right now, he suggested this being as proactive as possible to test the, um, test the 16 residents. There are some other staff members that we're working with right now. Um, there are, at certain times, there are times when people are out for precautionary things. Um, a lot of times like a wood, they don't, nothing comes of, comes of fruition, but for right now, it was just required and recommended for us to test these, uh, the residents. And if we have to move further with stuff, we most certainly will. Direction, uh, so directions about how to get hamburgers when they're available? I'm not sure. We'll make sure we put that in the memo. Um, yeah, I, yeah, it's gonna be, um, I guess it will be call in, can you walk up and get one? That's a great question. Jen usually gives me a, a strict thing to stay by, to make sure that we announce it to let you know. Sometimes all the details have not been ironed out, but we do like to give y'all some good news, um, to make sure we know what's gonna happen. So we'll make sure before Holly sends it out that our, um, or before Tuesday comes, that you have all the directions to how to order a hamburger. That's very important. I'd want to know that too. Um, I'd, I'd want to know that too. So we'll make sure we find that out for you, so I don't have that, um, detailed information. So. All right. I think that's all the calls. Um, I really appreciate y'all listening today and hopefully reading the memo and just, um, hopefully seeing that we're trying to do the best we can. Um, I will make no light of it. It is, is stressful and it's, and it can be worrisome, but, um, just due to the situation and, uh, just the world we live in and the environment that we serve. But it's, I couldn't feel more confident or positive about what we're doing and, and what we've done. So that's, that's very comforting. Um, but just know we're doing all we can. I think y'all know that. And, um, I think we've had a good track record so far. We'll continue to try to do that and we'll keep y'all updated with any changes, um, good, bad and different. And, um, you'll hear from me before if something happens. If not, we'll see y'all next Wednesday at 2:00. Thanks so much. Have a great week.